Good evening. It's 5:07. We're starting seven minutes late. The regular session of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster will please come to order. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Vice Chair Hall and our pledge will be led by Commissioner Cook. If you'd all please stand.
In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, thank you, Father, for allowing us to meet like this in a free country. Thank you for this city's 40th anniversary. Bless its leadership, this commission, and the decisions we make. God comfort those that are recovering from the hurricanes, calm the riots in St. Louis, and put out the wildfires. Lord bless our first responders, military, and family. Protect them as they protect us. Comfort the families of the fallen in our service. Bless those that are soon to retire from city service and give those taking over a smooth transition. I pray in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the roll call, please.
Commissioner Diana Cook?
Present.
Commissioner Cassandra Harvey?
Present.
Commissioner Drew Mercy?
Present.
Commissioner Sandy Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Randy Hall?
Chilling.
Chairman James Vos?
What was that you said?
Chilling.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ah, this ought to be a fun night. Public business from the floor. If individuals are unable to stay for the entire meeting, we offer a short 10-minute period for anyone who would care to address us on any item, agenda item. Mr. Luticki, do we have any early speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
All right, thank you. So, regular public business from the floor. Just to give you a little, for those of you who haven't been here before, I think some of you have, but a lot of you haven't, the commission hears items in a regular order typically. Individuals who are representing the applicant or the applicant are asked to fill out a speaker's card. We will typically call upon them to address the commission if they choose or if we have questions. And then, any member of the public can also speak to us for a period of three minutes, and then the applicant has an opportunity to rebut if they care to relative to each individual action item before us. We also receive a considerable amount of correspondence, including our agenda packet, which is distributed to us usually a week and a half prior to this meeting. We meet in regular session here on the second Monday of every month in a public venue. However, we do not deliberate. We meet with staff and review the proposed agenda, ask our individual questions, but we do not deliberate nor make decisions. And then, subsequent to that meeting, staff oftentimes will clarify agenda items, answer our questions individually, and share with the group any pertinent information that we've asked for. So, following along with that, we've received, for the record, a modification list relative to Agenda Item Number Two, which is a modification, the staff report a modification of our proposed resolution and a modification of Condition 23. We also received a modification of the staff report on Item 9C Charlie, 9 Charlie. Electronically on Friday, and we received a hard copy today. We also received what's called a presenter's list, which outlines the cases before us. And if we've received, in this case, what's called uncontested letters, where applicants or their representatives on behalf of the applicants write to the Planning Department and indicate whether they agree with all the proposed conditions as indicated on, as written on the agenda. We have received uncontested letters from all Items 1 through, excuse me, 2 through 7, Item Number 8, it doesn't apply, Item 9, A, B, and C, as well as Item 10. And then, the remainder are city items, so there are no specific uncontested letters. We also have received a printout of some information that we asked for last week regarding the date to file map documents, 180 days prior to tract map expirations that are on our agenda today. There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 tentative tract maps. And each applicant or their representative will be called upon to indicate for the record that they understand the precise final expiration date of their map, as well as the 180-day period that they must file a complete final map application, which means if they fail to do that, then the maps will expire. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 14, 2017. May I have a motion, please?
I move to accept the August 14, 2017 meeting minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. First action item before us is Item Number Two, which is a continued public hearing on conditional use permit 15-08 and tentative tract map number 72534. As I indicated, the public hearing is a continued public hearing. The hearing is open. And maybe we have a staff report, or a revised staff report, I guess, since the last time we met.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Vos and Commissioners. Again, this is a quest for residential plan development for 109 single-family lots, a 1.17-acre private park, and a .25-acre paseo in R7,000 zones. The streets within the subdivision would be private. On February 21, 2017, the Planning Commission voted to continue the public hearing to allow, for 60 days, to allow the applicant to work with staff to modify the design of the project to meet the RPD standards. Since April, the applicant has requested additional time and hired a consultant team to modify the design and reconfigure the park. Staff has met with applicant and his team several times to go over their progress. The revised map shows a 1.17-acre park and a new .25-acre paseo design. The proposed open space in paseos would amount to 14.08% of the gross area of the project, which is less than the required 15%. However, staff believes this slight decrease is acceptable to the size of the proposed rear yards, as shown plotted on the tentative map. Proposed paseo would provide a direct pedestrian connection from Street C to the park. Compared to the previous layout, staff believes this is a superior design and would provide additional connectivity. The conceptual plot plan reveals lots to the north and south of the park that would have homes sited to front the park. This configuration would provide a safe environment by providing additional eyes on the park. In addition, architectural renderings illustrate the styles and the quality of the proposed homes. These renderings would provide direction for a future developer when designing house plans and for staff when reviewing them for compliance. The previous report stated that this was an infill RPD, and it is not. That was my mistake. Sorry for that confusion. The RPD meets the goals of the City General Plan pertaining to community design and the objectives to enhance overall community form, create a vibrant sense of place by utilizing design standards that instill a sense of pride and well-being in the community, as evidenced by the strategic placement of the park in relation to the surrounding homes and the placement of the paseo that would provide inviting connection to the neighborhood park. The RPD adheres to, and in some respects exceeds, the adopted city design guidelines and the Design Performance Standards, as illustrated in the conceptual elevations, which show added architectural elements to the side and rear elevations, such as added windows, framing around the windows, shutters, and staggered wall planes. Currently, these architectural elements are only requested for street-adjacent properties. The applicant is proposing these details for all second-story homes. In addition, the real elevation plan two illustrates a patio and a sun deck. These combined added architectural elements would set apart from the typical tract home. This RPD provides the opportunity for unique and creative designs that are not possible under the city's typical development regulations by, one, providing development that is self-supporting rather than predominantly dependent on public funding for ongoing street and park maintenance, and, two, providing an alternative to the R7,000 development standards by allowing smaller lot areas with reduced yard setbacks and street frontages, creating a more economically attractive alternative for single-family development and additional ownership options while still providing amenities not available in conventional development. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 17-25, approving conditional use permit 17-17, subject to good conditions of approval. That concludes staff presentation. Staff is both for any questions, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
All right, very good. May we hear from the applicant?
Steve Weiss.
Say the name again, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Microphone's not on.
Your mic's not on. Hang on a minute.
Chairman Vos, you hear me better now? I have a pretty big mouth, so most people can generally hear me, so I do the best I can. Again, Chairman Vos, Vice Chair Hall, Commissioners Cook, Harvey, Mercy, and Smith, and Mr. Luticki and Ms. Corbett, for the record, again, my name is Steve Weiss. I'm with KTGY Architecture, and I represent Global Investments Incorporated. We, from February, I know you've been anxiously awaiting to see this again, we looked at this project very carefully, and we looked at the RPD zoning, as well as the general plan, and figured out a way that this could be a very well-contained subdivision. So, we looked at everything from the outside and the inside, and I won't bore you with what Chris has already discussed, but this is what we've come up with, which we feel is in compliance with the RPD and also makes living much better. There is this middle area we found in the housing market that people really want to live in self-contained subdivisions with parks nearby, where you can will your kid, where it's on a safe street, where there's good eyes on the street. So, I'll just start from there. Project site, as you know, along J8. It's an area that's still undeveloped. We're very aware of that. Was out there today, walked the site. It's not so easy to get out to, but we do see there are subdivisions that are popping up around the area. This area gives you, this gives you an idea of the parks and different types of infrastructure within the area that's either planned or unplanned. This gives you an idea of the project site, land use concept and zoning. It obviously sits within the R7,000 area, and we took that into account, and types of subdivisions within the area, especially the new homes. This is the project site. It's about 20 acres. There are some existing homes along 65th. That would be the nearest developed area. So, what we did was listen. We listened to the tape in February, and we took it to heart. What we saw in the RPD zoning and what the expectations of the commission were that night was, how do you have a subdivision that looks like an R7,000 but really functions much more in a uniform manner, that it's not going to cost the city money to maintain? And so, here's what we did, was we came up with connections. We created a connectivity plan. We figured a context, how landscape buffers fit in, how, when people live within a subdivision, how they look out on the street, and what the experience is like. Variation in building type, we came up with a single-story plan, and this was all done through our architectural group. Community, how we create identity within the community, and also the types of amenities. Yes, there is a park. Now, we're going to show you a highly amenitized park that we think is going to be a great focal point and gathering point. So, this is your general design. You have the entrance, you have the park, and then, right between the park, you have a paseo, a wide paseo that gets you down to the next street, and you can actually walk within the paseo, and also, the parking is cut away, so there's good parking opportunities. And also, it shows the single-story elements. Here's what the park will look like. Special paving across the street, very nice landscaping, and also totlot, seat walls, an area where you can recreate, park walkways that go around. Third eye look. The reason why this is important is because it shows how the units were reoriented to face the park. Creates much more of an experience of living within a nice subdivision, where, say, a mom and two kids can walk their kid, kids over to the park, meet their friends, congregate in the morning, and with lots of shade. It's an important part we took into consideration and closely followed the park standards for a neighborhood park. Street scene, this is what it looks like. We have a sidewalk, and we have a park bike, and we also have, we also have driveways that are at least 20 feet, so you don't have cars hanging out onto the street. And you still have rear yards, 30-foot yards, 20 to 30-foot yards, even on the single-story plans, and you have articulation of the units. This shows you, this is on all of the units. Here's an example of the single story, where you have windows that go around. We looked at no blank walls, and as I was around, looked around Lancaster for the fourth time in two months, I've noticed the new subdivisions do show that. We have window treatment, we have a variation of units. The size of the units are, they go from about 1,900 square feet all the way up to 29. Another nice street scene, mature trees. Another look at the paseo, how the paseo connects, and these are the renderings. And just as an aside, we have representatives from LDI, very fine landscape architects that designed this, and we also have civil engineering and drafting that did the subdivision Another idea, another look at the park paseo. You have, you have open space, you have benches, and you have a nice organized set of trees in the area, so people can actually walk around, recreate, and even have a picnic out there. This is an example of the play equipment. Very, very nice play equipment, utilitarian, everything from poured-in-place, concrete, and nice pavers, and seat walls, bike racks. This is what they'll look like. Back in February, you didn't see anything. Well, now you see. We have four plans with variations throughout. Recession driveways, very, very modern-looking. Of course, the, of course, everything's right up to code, street trees, and, again, multi-dimensional with window treatment, and a lot of recess in the design. These are the Plan One elevations. Go through those pretty quickly. Plan Two fronts. Plan Three fronts. Again, driveways are, garage doors are recessed. There's your single story. So, one of the important parts of this project, and we listened, was a concern over maintaining this, and this will be entirely maintained through a private homeowners association, 109 units. Also, the developer, Global, is committing to improve the park. So, what Mr. Ani talked about, the slight shortage in percentage, is made up with the construction. And in my experience, 35 years of doing this, we also, we always factor the improvements into the land, and having 1.17 with a fully improved park is a pretty nice park for this area. We don't see anything of this, this high level of improvement, at least in my observation. Lancaster's a beautiful city. We really just want to make it more beautiful. So, in my opinion, we've created something that I think that the City of Lancaster can be proud of, and also, the trend is, there's absolutely nothing wrong with R7,000, but we believe that we've come up with a self-contained subdivision that is very, very conducive to families, single income, single, single-family types of things, where the, actually, you can go to work, and someone can stay home and take care of the kids. The price points we think are, will work for this area, and, again, we're very proud of this. I have a full staff here that can answer any technical questions tied to this, but at this point, we, we're very proud of this, and we ask that the Planning Commission support this concept. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. There may be some questions, if you, members, anyone?
What is the price point starting at, and what is the HOA?
That is an answer that I can give to the, to the owner, but it's my understanding that the price point will be competitive with the newer homes in this area.
Are you suggesting that the owner of this property is actually a single-family residential developer?
The owner of this property?
Yeah.
I, I think, at least in my experience, the types of companies that develop these do specialize in this type of development.
Really? Go to your site plan, would you please? Now, if I was operating that, I would have screwed it up first.
I apologize.
That's all right. No problem. I think it was number two or three in there.
Yeah. I'm used to a keyboard. I can take the number and return.
Yeah.
It's, it would be a...
We'll find it, eventually. There you go. There you go. There was another one showing the connectivity, I believe. Do we have that, Brian? The connectivity to the adjacencies?
I don't know.
Ah, there it is. So, in observing this proposed layout, it indicates connectivities on J8 and J12, and adjacencies, which one could assume from the, from the RPD design, that you have the potential of locking in your adjacencies to a similar layout. Would you agree?
I understand your question. What we, what we tried to do is come up with a good design for this, and hopefully, this design could influence future subdivisions. That's really what our goal is. There's, there's no, no other intent than that to say, what is the most intelligent way to design 109 units on 20 acres?
So, the yield per acre on this, excluding the park site, is what? Do we know approximately?
We think it's about five units per acre. And they range from, anywhere from 4,000 to 7,000 square feet. They're, they're all over the board.
So, the, you, you've made a point regarding the infrastructure, in effect, being installed by the developer and maintained by the homeowners association.
Yes, sir.
The infrastructure that is not, not dedicated to the water district. Water district has to maintain their own water pipes. You have to put them in, natural gases, et cetera. But the curb gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, basin paving, that's what you're talking about.
And the park.
And the park.
Yes, sir. And the paseo, of course.
All right. Any idea, in a performa evaluation, what that's worth, per year, per month, approximately?
I would have to defer that to the, to the, to my client, but, but I, I know that he wouldn't have committed to a homeowners association, and I have seen this. This is not uncommon, especially with the, I wouldn't even call these small lot. These are still, you still have backyards to these. A lot of them you see don't even have backyards, but I think the difference between going from an R7,000 to this, there is some room in the performa to be able to justify this.
When I read through the RPD development standards, it talks about a uniqueness to layout and design. You've mentioned what some could interpret as unique, but the grid pattern certainly is not unique. I mean, that's pretty standard for a residential subdivision, particularly up here. All you have to do is look around, right?
I would, I would say yes, but with a caveat.
Okay.
The, we looked at that, too, and sometimes, you don't, you don't break what's not broken. As far as the oval within there, however, we did create parking cutouts within there, and also put parkways and sidewalks, as well as recessed garages and an undulating building setback within there. So, I would say, we compared the two, and we felt that there's, there's a lot of care that goes into this.
What I'm concerned about is, Commissioner Cook raised a question on price point. You know, you're ways away, assuming that it's truly a development project, not just a mapping exercise. We have, if you were paying attention, a series of map extensions on our agenda tonight. We haven't had a new subdivision built in this town in, oh, I don't know, seven, eight, nine, 10 years, somewhere in that range. You all have gone to a great deal of expense to comply with the minimum standards of an RPD application. However, you know, some, you know, from my point of view, I think a project home of this type, as it's laid out, not necessarily in this location, but that type of a product, is certainly marketable here at current market rates. However, when you overlay a homeowners association on that, at a $300 or $400 a month price point, or whatever turns out to be, you know, that makes an impact on the marketability. So, if the marketability today is a straight R1,7,000, four lots to the acre or thereabouts, then you're talking about a yield of 5.8 or something like that. That's all well and good, and it's somewhat remote, but if you're going to overlay another 100, 200, 300, I don't know what the number is, but I can tell you that it won't sell if it's market rate plus. I mean, so, you know, given that, why should we approve it, if it's not marketable? You follow what I'm asking?
Sir, your point is well-taken, but if you allow me, I, I think I have an explanation for you.
That's why I asked the question.
Yes, sir. The difference really is between a 7,000-square-foot lot and probably a 4,000 to 5,000-square-foot lot. I mean, these are, these are designed more, you know, larger template. I think in the 7,000 range, not to say that, that it's old, but it's a different concept. This is something that has, is being looked at, and the demand is there. People are not as interested in having the extra 2,000-square-foot of rear yard, and that 2,000-square-foot can... and that two thousand square foot can certainly make up for that and justify that. Yes, we understand. I, actually, I was in public government for thirty years and I, I under, I totally understand what you're saying, and I see the map extensions coming and coming, but you're not going to see something like this. This is something that is new. This is, that's why I, actually, I commend Lancaster for their RPD zoning, because it, other than having to do a, a very complicated zone change on something like this, this actually allows the commission to make an intelligent decision as to what they think makes sense for the future of Lancaster.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
Actually, Mr. Wise, I have one comment. I think there's probably four of us that were architecture design commissioners prior to this role that we have today.
Appreciate that.
And we have an appreciation for the three sixty architecture, at least the attempt, especially on the, the two stories. So, good job on that.
Thank you.
Also wanted to say thank you for taking it seriously.
We're very serious.
The first time we looked at it earlier this year, it was just black lines on a piece of paper. Now, it looks like you're ready to move forward.
Now you can make a decision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have any of the speakers on this, Mr. Lutowski?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, Christopher, you indicated that, that even though section seventeen oh eight three forty calls out seventeen oh eight eighty and sixty on infill, it doesn't apply in this case?
It does not, excuse me, it does not meet the definition of an infill.
Okay. Very good. Appreciate you clarifying that. All right then, no further speakers? Members? All right then, without objection, close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero two approving conditional use permit number fifteen dash zero eight and tentative tract map number seven two five three four.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes six zero.
Very good. Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
And thank you very much, too.
Next item is item number three. This is a continued public hearing on tentative tract map number six one five seven four. This is an application to grant, I'm sorry, a request to grant a one-year extension to June seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff Do we have speakers on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is the applicant or their representative here present?
Good evening. Chairman Vos, members of the commission, my name is Beau Cooper. I'm the entitlement manager with United Engineering Group, here representing the, the applicant and property owner.
Okay.
We have reviewed all the conditions of approval and we have no objections, and I'm here available for any questions.
So, the special condition number two on the general advisory is saying that the final map, a complete application must be filed no later than January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. You understand that?
July, right?
It expires July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Correct. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yes, you're correct.
The application must be, complete app must be filed, which means you should already have started on the final map.
That's correct.
And have you?
My firm has not.
That's my expected answer.
Yeah.
So, if a firm is engaged to complete a final map, it has, a complete application would have to be filed with the city engineer or planning department. And in that application, there's a checklist about thirty items long that we're, we understand, fees to be paid and twenty items to be completed as a complete package.
Correct.
So, if that's not filed, the map dies.
Correct.
Dead, as of the nineteenth of January, two thousand and eighteen. Carry that message back to your client, would you please?
Yes, already done.
Super. All right, thanks very much. Okay, any other speakers? All right. So, without objection, the public hearing is closed and we'll consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to June seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised condition list, attachment to resolution number oh six dash five six.
I second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item is a continued public hearing on item number four, tentative tract map number six two four eight five. This is a one-year extension to July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, the final extension. So, is the, we have an uncontested letter on this, we have an uncontested letter on all of them. Is the applicant's representative here?
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon, Chairman Vos, commissioners, city staff. My name is Chris Panero. I am the project management consultant for Royal Investors Group, and we have five maps before you tonight for extensions. I just want to let you know that we have looked, and I have notes on every file of when we need to submit final maps, so I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
So, you know that this particular map is January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the drop dead date?
Yeah.
You got that?
So, I have to submit by January eighteenth.
And you know on, let's see, you have five, you say, so we'll just go right through them, if you don't mind.
No problem.
Item number seven, six four eight seven seven, which is August twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen. And...
Should take that back. I do have one map that has a two-year extension.
Right.
So...
So, nine A, that's March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and nine B is March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and, let's see, nine C is, 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 March twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen. That's right?
Right.
So, you understand why we're bringing this forward?
We do. We understand completely.
Are engineers engaged on these five that are preparing final maps?
We're in discussions right now.
Pardon?
We're in discussions with our engineers right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the answer really right now is no.
At this point, no.
Discussion is discussion. I got it.
Exactly.
I understand.
Exactly.
I understand what you said. So, if you started yesterday, you might make the date. We hope, we hope that, we hope that actually people file final maps?
Yes.
And move these projects forward. If not, that's okay too, but we don't want to waste our time anymore and we certainly don't want to waste applicants' time paying fees to extend maps that have no marketability.
Understood.
So, okay. Anyone having questions on this one? Six two four eight five? Nope? Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right then, we'll close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to July seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number zero six dash five eight.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item is a continued public hearing on item five tract map, tentative tract map number six three oh three one. The hearing's open on this. Is the applicant's representative here? We did receive an uncontested letter.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I represent item number five and six, and we're aware of the, the time requirement for some of the final map and plans.
Okay, this, this particular one is January nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, right?
Correct.
And the next one is December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Correct.
So, if you started three months ago, you might make that date, or if somebody started.
We're, we're pretty quick. We could do that.
But the question is, have you started?
Not yet.
Okay, very good. Okay, as long as we're clear on what the requirements are, that's what's important. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Anything further? Anyone else on this one, Mr. Lutowski? Any speakers? No.
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So, we'll close the public hearing on item five without objection and consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant a one-year extension to June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised condition list, attachment to resolution number zero six dash five zero.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item is continued public hearing, item number six, which is tentative tract map number six three one one two. So, the public hearing is open on this. Mr. Malik already indicated he understood that, as the applicant's representative, that December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen is the final day to file a complete tract map, final tract map application, for the record. So, do we have any other speakers on this, Mr. Lutowski?
No other cards, Mr. Chairman.
No other cards. Nobody wants to speak on it? Okay. Any questions from anyone? Comments? Without objection, we'll close the public hearing and consider a motion.
I make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number zero six dash five one.
I'll second.
Anything further?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. And the next continued public hearing is item number seven, which is tentative tract map number six four eight seven seven. Public hearing is open on this item. The applicant's representative indicated that they understood that the last date to file a complete application for a final map is February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, if I have that right? Okay. Okay, do we have any other speakers on this, Mr. Lutowski?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number oh six dash six three.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Nothing further? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. And the final continued public hearing is item number eight. This item is, what is it? All right, this is a request to continue the public hearing till October sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Do we have any speakers on this item?
I have no speakers, cards.
All right, no, no one in the audience wishes to speak on this? Okay, then it would be appropriate to continue the public hearing and consider a motion to continue it.
I move that we continue the public hearing to the October sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion passes six zero and the item will be placed on your October agenda.
Thank you. All right, the next item are not necessarily one-year extensions, the first two are, but the third isn't. These are new public hearings, so without objection, the public hearings are open on item nine A. This is tentative tract map number six zero three six seven. We've heard from the applicant's representative indicating that the last day to file a final map is March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and that they understand the general advisory number two. Do we have any speakers on this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. No one wishing to speak on the item? All right then, without objection, we'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move we grant a one-year extension to September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised condition list, attachment to resolution number zero six dash six six.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, so, are we ready to vote?
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. So, item nine B is a one-year extension on tentative tract map number six one six seven eight. The public hearing is open on this item. The applicant's representative indicated they agree that the final day to file, or the final day to file a complete final map application is March twenty-sixth, two thousand Do we have any speakers on this item?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, without objection, we'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move that we grant a one-year extension to September eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution oh six dash six seven.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, item nine C is a tentative tract map number six three three six five, to grant a two-year extension to September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, which the applicant's representative indicated they understood that the final complete map application must be... be filed no later than March twenty first, two thousand and eighteen. Twenty ninth is it, or twenty first? I can't read my own writing. You're right, I can't read my own writing. Yeah, mine says March twenty first, two thousand nineteen. Is that what we have?
Yes.
Right? Did I say eighteen? Oh, no wonder. Two thousand nineteen, right. Okay. All right, any, any others, any speakers on this?
No cards, Mr. Chairman.
No one wishing to speak? All right. Then we'll close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion.
I move to grant a two-year extension to September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the revised conditions list, attachment to resolution number zero seven dash four zero.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the maps. Item ten is conditional use permit number one seven two three. So, without objection, the public hearings open on this item. We did receive this afternoon, an uncontested letter. However, we had some input at our last meeting, so we'd like to hear your brief staff report, please, on this item.
Chair, both and commissioners, I have before you tonight conditional use permit seventeen dash twenty-three. Project is located at four two six three zero, Ten Street West, Unit One. Request is for an alcohol beverage control license type twenty-one, so that may, so that they may include alcohol in gift boxes they sell as part of their business. The use would be classified as an incidental off-sale alcohol beverage establishment because it will utilize less than five percent of sales floor area for the sale and display of alcoholic beverages. There are no distance requirements for incidental off-sale establishment. Gift boxes typically, typically include consumables and the applicant wants to offer the option of including beer, wine, or spirits in gift boxes. Alcohol will only be sold as part of a gift box, gift box, or gift package. Alcohol sales will not be allowed otherwise. In a gift package with alcohol, if a gift package with alcohol is ordered for delivery, the courier will only deliver to a person over twenty-one years of age. Because the business is not a traditional retail establishment and alcohol will be sold only as part of a packaged gift box, the applicant is requesting the ability to sell items normally restricted by the standard conditions for off-sale of alcohol. Gift boxes containing alcohol or alcohol or the type of alcohol available for gift boxes will be displayed on shelves at the subject location. The total number, the total amount of shelving floor space as shown on the floor plan is a hundred and five square feet across three shelving units. To ensure there is no technical violation of the required five percent sales floor area threshold, the display of alcohol will be limited to a maximum of eighty square feet of floor area. In the current floor plan, two shelving units may be used to display alcohol without violating this threshold. Staff has reviewed the application and proposed floor plan for compliance with all development regulations. The proposed project is conformance with the general plan and the provisions for the L I zone. Staff believes there's no reason to suspect the use could adversely impact neighboring businesses or residences. The requested license will facilitate expansion of a local business and allow them to diversify their offerings. Therefore, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution seventeen dash twenty-nine, approving conditional use permit seventeen dash twenty-three, subject to conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. There may be some. So clarify for us the waiver of our standard alcohol beverage, single container sales requirement.
Well, because their business is not a typical retail sales, people are not going to go in there just to buy alcohol. That's why we felt that most of these conditions didn't apply to single sales because...
So if I went, if I went to this business and said, "I want to purchase a, oh, a single container of spirits under three hundred and fifty milliliters, they'd put it in a cardboard box, tie a ribbon on it, and I could buy it." Would that be defined as a gift box?
Well, they would have to, they would have to have it in a gift, gift box, yes.
How do we control that?
I'm not sure how you would really control that, but...
I, I'm not either, that's why I'm asking the question. How, how is the, the incidental sale of gift boxes, gift packages containing an alcoholic beverage or not? How, how do we, how do we, how does the city licensing, um, control that? How does Development Services control that? If we approve this as recommended, how, you know, how do you control that? I mean, we know how you control a liquor store, we know how you control a mini mart. We know that part. But the, you know, type twenty-one alcohol license is a general off-sale package store license.
Correct.
Now, what we're doing, proposing to do is place a condition on that, limiting the use. However, that license, bless you, that license could be utilized in another location?
No.
Someone, someone could make an argument that says, gee, it's a type twenty-one, what if A B C doesn't agree with our condition? Then what? Then where are we?
A B, A B C does ask for our conditions and they do follow what, what the commission sets forth in terms of the, the approved conditions.
So we, we, we got that in writing from A B C, they're locked in tight on this, huh?
That's, that's their standard practice.
Okay. Thank you. So really with this, if I understood what you shared with us previously, last meeting, this is a, actually a florist operation, isn't it?
Right, it is a florist, so when you drive by, it'll say florist, it's not going to have anything on there that's saying that they're selling alcohol. Um, and there are, there are other establishments nearby, if there, if someone's looking to buy alcohol, they could just go a half mile to the south or half mile to the north and just purchase alcohol straight out without getting a gift basket.
This is a florist and event planner. How are we to know if this is not being purchased for events? I mean, is that a whole different? Because you're, you're talking about strictly gift baskets, it sounds to me, if, if I'm an event planner and I have access to...
This, the request is not to have any kind of events at this location?
I'm not saying at the location, but they're planning events and they have a liquor license.
There's a different liquor license for catering, that's a type forty-eight, I believe.
Okay.
So that's a different license.
Okay, and I also have a concern about the delivery. Just as Chairman Boas indicated, you know, if I walk into a store and I'm buying alcohol, you know, there's a mechanism to card. I, I don't really get carded too much anymore, but, um...
I don't either.
To be, I, isn't that sad? Um, to be carded, but if you've got, say, a, you know, a twenty-year-old employee driver who's delivering gift baskets, how is that really going to be? And, and I'm just kind of jumping into the twenty-year-old driver, it could be the owner who's doing it, I don't know. But if you're delivering gift baskets around town, I do have a concern about people double checking I D's and things like that before.
Now, I know when you order wine, because I've had it delivered before, they actually ask for I D for, you know, someone over the age of twenty-one.
Right, that's U P S and FedEx, is that what you're, you're talking about?
Yeah.
We're talking about a small business, local, you know, people who aren't trained U P S and FedEx, drivers under those regulations. So, I think that goes a little, you know, if you're not home, you have to go pick up your wine at the, yeah, not that I know, but... But I, I do have a concern about that.
It's a unique concept, I, you know, I mean, it certainly has merit for, for the, for folks who are interested in unique gift baskets, particularly, you know, florists and other items. I mean, it's very, it's a very unique concept. You know, we, we've not ever had anything like that proposed in our community. However, we've been very, we, this commission has been very concerned particularly about type twenty-one licenses. We've never approved one. Hasn't been a twenty-one approved in this town since a long time ago, probably before the town was a town. So, um, that's what is giving me heartburn and I, and I, and I'm, you know, I, I must assume the applicant is responsible. I mean, so, but how do we, you know, how do we know? How do we control it? How do we measure it? And, and that's, those are the questions I have that I need to be comfortable with to say yes.
So is the applicant here? Because I think some, some of us have questions as well.
Oh, they are? Oh, cool, great, maybe they'd like to come up and tell us all these great things you're gonna do.
I have one question before you approach. If this was granted, the type twenty-one with the florist business, and then she sold it, could somebody obtain or take over the type twenty-one and do away with the florist part of it?
No, because the, the location is tied to the conditional use permit and it's only for the florist. And again, after ninety days, the conditional use permit is null and void, it's over. But if, if someone came in to take over her business, she can, or they, they could, as long as it's the same, you know, same type of use, same type of business plan.
So by buying the business and that address with the type twenty-one...
They would take over the conditions essentially.
But, so it would have to be with the flowers and the gift box?
Right.
It would have to be a package?
That's the only way this, yeah, correct.
Well, according to the, one of the conditions, it said, you know, gift box or gift package. And could the gift package be like drinking utensils? I mean, going off of Commissioner Cook's statement here, as if the next person took over and wasn't selling flowers, it would still fall under the condition, wouldn't it?
What do you mean by drinking utensils?
By packaging the, the beverage sale, let's just say, for instance, I'm, I'm Pete Kometovich and I decide to offer the applicant a hundred thousand dollars for their type twenty-one. And, and in her infinite wisdom, they decide to sell it and the new applicant is in the, the gift box. I got gift boxes. I'm selling, you know, eight eighty out of gift boxes, malt liquor. It's not beyond the realm of possibilities. That's what, the question, how do we control it? How do we know for sure? I got it, ninety days, you know, it expires, what about eighty-nine days? It doesn't. The last thing I want to see personally in this town is another type twenty-one. And if there's any risk of it becoming a, what we consider a liquor store, I'm gonna have to vote no, if there's any risk at all. So, I need to be assured. Come on down. You are... Mildred? I can't hear you. Doreen!
Doreen, yes, sir.
You are Doreen Lopez.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Doreen, don't be nervous.
I'm extremely nervous.
Don't be.
So many notes that I took...
There's no reason to be nervous.
So many notes that I took down. Floral event and planning is, was the one that stuck out with me right now. This location will not be floral event and planning. This, this, we have a, a business in town right now and it's Isla's Floral Boutique and Event Planning, and that's located at one zero zero eight West Avenue J-Tent. That's what that location does. This one will be Isla's Boutique, will have nothing to do with event planning at all, it will stand alone just as the boutique. Flowers come in because with every gift box, we give flowers. And that's how the whole things, the whole concept started was sometimes flowers just aren't enough when you're doing a gift box or you're asking to do a, a gift. So, if we were to do the celebration of a new baby, we put together a gift box, and I don't know, they had had pictures that we had submitted, I'm not even sure if they're around. So the gift box itself comes in a, in a nice little gift, in a nice little box, and it has everything for a baby. It would have the layout set, it would have a toy, you know, the stuffed animal and so forth. And with it, should the person purchasing decide to add a small bottle of wine, they'd have the choice of doing that. But it's not like they have to purchase the gift box and they all come with alcohol, it's just an option. And that came to us because at the location we're at now, we started just, Mark, just somebody came in and said, do, do gift boxes? And we thought, like, because you can order them online from Teleflora, from the wine places, F T D has them, but they don't do alcohol, they do candies, they do Mrs. Fields cookies and so forth. So as we were asked, as people were asking us, we said, well, we can put together something that's unique and different and that just goes towards your baby, no alcohol. So we started putting in the Martinelli's, the small bottles of the sparkling ciders, and that went over really well. Came Valentine's Day, our first time in the Antelope Valley, we did, we were welcomed really nice by the valley, but people were calling and saying the same thing, do you have something that offers us alcohol? Our question was no. So we, we felt the market out there. And that's where the concept came from. So you can't just come in and ask us to do, to take a bottle of whatever it is, Jack Daniels, and put it in a box and tie a ribbon around it.
However, your license would allow you to do that, that's the point.
But that's, yeah, I understand what the license allows us to do, but that's not what the business is, the foundation of the business was set for.
I hear what you're saying, but how do we know that that's exactly the way you're going to do it?
Because...
What happens if you get a rush of business and nobody wants flowers, nobody wants layouts, nobody wants Valentines, they...
But we're not a liquor store.
Well, your license says you are.
License says that we can, I guess that's where morals and...
Don't argue with me, I know the liquor license.
It allows...
You have the ability to do that.
To do that.
If you call it a, if you call it a gift, that's what it is. So, how do you, how do you convince us that we should approve it?
I would guess because we've tested, well, it comes from morals and values, and I think maybe that's what it is for us. When we started this, we started, I think, I picked Chris's brain eighteen months ago, I've been in and out and in and out and just trying to feel and see what was the best possible way. It's, it's been a learning process across the board. We're not new to the Antelope Valley. I've been a resident here almost a long time, a long time. And, and I agree, I don't want to see a liquor store in every corner and so forth. I just want to see the community grow and given the opportunity to, to provide people options on different things. So I, as far as we were talking about shipping, we will follow the same standards and we're looking into the same software that U P S and FedEx has. So when you arrive at somebody's doorstep, we swipe their driver's license because you can go ahead and duplicate driver's license illegally. This will tell us whether or not that driver's license is valid for the person and whether or not the ages for that person match up. So deliveries can't be made. At this particular place, nobody under the age of twenty-five will be employed there just because of the risks and because twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three are still kind of that, you know, learning curve as to testing the waters, we feel that twenty-five and over, even our drivers will be twenty-five and over.
So is twenty-five, they still test the waters, but I just thought it...
Yeah, well, we're hoping they're a little bit more, you know...
Thirty-five, forty-five.
Forty-five.
I, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
About what percentage of bouquets or gifts, packages do you sell now? Not dollar amount, but about how many a week? And what do you project if, if you had the type twenty-one that you would do? What do you, what do you think your projection is?
As far as gift boxes now, I want to say we... As far as gift boxes now, I want to say we probably do because we don't really market them a whole lot. We've just been kind of playing with the idea. We might do two or three a month. And that's just, I mean, we did, I want to say maybe 10 the whole month of February, this past February. We were very specific in what we put in them right now. We're only offering three. So we were just kind of testing the waters. We don't expect there to be a high volume on the alcohol side, but we just wanted to be able to go ahead and offer that in there.
Why is it so important to you that you include alcohol?
When we were doing it, when we were just testing it, when you go ahead and you send out, uh, let me think, the bridal ones, for instance, we would, they would ask us, and we had been asked, could we go ahead and include a bottle of wine or something because the bride just got married or so and so? We told them no. So they could purchase the Bevmo card and bring it back to us, and we could put the Bevmo card inside the box and send it off. It's just, it was convenience. Some places, some people that we delivered to didn't have a Bevmo next to them. So it was trying to find somewhere that they could gift card that would be convenient for them. So it's just a matter of convenience in doing it. So when you get the box, you have the entire box, you have everything for that moment.
Do you feel you're successful now?
We feel we're, we're doing well. We're still, we're still new to the community on the flower side. So we are doing well.
Could you yourself buy gift cards and upcharge whatever that amount of that gift card is? I know that it's not tangible, but, you know, they're not gonna get the bottle of wine or champagne, but could you just do your packaging with gift cards for alcohol that way?
It would, then we would have to find out where they're going because eventually we plan to grow. So if we had to send somewhere else and not in our, because we're familiar with the general area, the Quartz Hill, Little Rock, and so forth, people have to travel to come in. If you're in Little Rock, the closest Bevmo is in Palmdale. So if you're delivering to somebody that's either elder or, you know, has just had a baby, then they have to come into town. So once again, it's for convenience. So when they open it up, they have the entire, everything that, whatever the purchaser decided to purchase. It has to do kind of like, when you order the boxes of wines and stuff, we could very well just either run to the market or run to Bevmo or run to wherever. It's once again for convenience.
I love business. I love creativity. I think it's great that you have an idea, but to be honest, I am nervous as heck about the type 21.
Do you mind if I ask what the nervousness is?
Because of the potential? Or maybe your success and then you sell? And then what, it just, the whole type 21, because it would operate like a liquor store if you chose to. You would have the right to do that. You clearly stated you wouldn't, but you would have that right.
Ms. Lopez, you actually hit on it yourself just now. You just said to this commission that oftentimes you deliver to places that are further out than a Bevmo, that don't have a Bevmo close. So in my mind, that makes you turn into a liquor store, delivery on wheels.
Well, no, because we're not delivering alcohol. We're delivering a gift box. So you can't just-
It's alcohol.
They, they have the option to purchase alcohol. So it's not, that's not what we're advertising, is the, is the alcohol. We're not saying, we're the only, you know, boutique in town that's got door-to-door delivery. That's not by any means what we're doing. But should you decide to come in and purchase a gift for your father, and you wanted him to get the entire package, then he would be able to get the entire package.
I think it'd almost be prudent if you had, if I were a customer, that I brought in my own alcohol and have you package it up in that basket. Have you thought about that concept or a different process?
Cannot do that. It's against the law.
So you can't package it up if I brought my own alcohol in and you package it up?
No, ma'am.
Or, either way, I think it, it almost-
Because if I, if I went ahead and you brought me your alcohol, and you wanted to deliver it to this lady right here, I'm sorry, Ms. Wayne?
Jocelyn.
Ms. Jocelyn. And you wanted to go ahead and deliver it to Ms. Jocelyn. So you bring me in your bottle of wine, and we wrap it up, and we put the flowers, and we do the whole thing, and I just take it and give it to Ms. Jocelyn. Ms. Jocelyn's only 19 years old.
I still don't think your process is robust.
Like the guideline, the guidelines don't hold us to anything. In going through the process of ABC, it was, it was almost the same process. It was the whys and, you know, all of the different things. Excuse me. And testing the waters. And I, and I know that it, it is, it's very risky. Excuse me.
Because there's no controls in place on either side of it. There are no controls in place.
But ABC, like, like Chris says, when we had to do this, ABC asked the same thing. Are you a liquor store? And could you turn into a liquor store? And when we submitted the whole thing, they, they have a clear file of every picture that's on here, every shelf, every box, and that's what we're held accountable to. So if they were to come in and, and ask for a bottle or something to be, it could not be done. Their process was, it was, it was a very intense process. It was one that, I think we actually pulled our CUP at one time and had to reevaluate it to make it go to their standards because their standards were, were extremely tough. And they asked, you know, the same questions, just on a different level. They asked about the ID swipes and so forth. So we had to, you know, we told them the standards that we're having the software built to because that, they were concerned about the delivery of alcohol. Can you just run in there? Can I just come in and just get a quick beer? And the answers had, you know, were no across the board. If your, if your intent is to purchase alcohol, and our boxes start at 65 and go up, and all you want is that beer, it's a $65 can of beer.
Actually-
I don't see-
Brings a question up. I apologize. Just go ahead and finish your-
No, no, it's, it's okay.
In terms of the creativity we can get on conditions, you know, we, we do conditions on the size of the floor space. Would, would we be able to do conditions on the value of the alcoholic component of the package? You know, in order to say, limit saying somebody goes in and just does a, an alcohol wishlist gift basket, and all they're purchasing is alcohol seems to be one of the concerns we've got. Can we do something along those lines? What kind of flexibility would we have, again, to make sure if we're considering it, we could have faith that, you know, it's a gift package containing a lot of different items, of which one or two may be, but it's not the driving majority of what the person's purchasing?
Yeah, I suppose we can take a look at that and see if there's some other condition we can add, or-
Because it's in our packet with ABC. It's in our conditions with them. They were very strict on, on some of the same questions as to, could they, could this, you know?
So I guess, oh, well, that, that's a good question. So right now, under the ABC regulation, or, or of, of the license of what you're getting from ABC, would you be able to sell a gift package that was just alcohol?
No. No.
Do we have a copy of that? Do we have a copy of that?
You can't have more than-
So do we have a copy of that?
You can't have more than one spirit in the thing. So you couldn't do-
You couldn't do like a-
You couldn't do a his and hers and throw in a bottle of wine and a bottle of whiskey and then some pretzels and then, well, you can't do that.
Let me ask staff a question. There are other alcohol purveyors in the community that sell gift packages, gift baskets, including wine. Antelope Valley Winery for one.
Correct.
And that's a different license, however. They're in the business to be able to sell individual bottles of wine and cases and all sorts of stuff. It's a different license entirely than a type 21. Maybe the, you know, you have to purchase your product from licensed purveyors. You can't go to Bevmo and buy it yourself and then resell it, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, you couldn't even, because without the license, without the, like, up until now, we, we've had people that have said, can you put this in the answer?
No, no, I understand, but you-
So no, you can't just run to Bevmo and-
Assuming this business goes forward, this application is approved as written.
Yes, sir.
You, you do not have the ability to purchase product, alcohol beverage product, from anyone other than a licensed distributor.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay. So you've asked for single containers of every kind of alcoholic beverage there is, including spirits, wine, beers, malt liquor, everything, the full gamut. That's what you've asked for here.
On that, we're only gonna be carrying, I know what the, the scope of the license is.
Let, let me finish. That's what you've asked for.
Correct.
So if in your mind, if I'm hearing you correctly, you are limiting in, in your offering, something less than that full line of product.
Correct.
You're focusing on some narrow perspective, possibly champagne, possibly wine, maybe spirits, maybe, maybe beer, maybe not. You know, my suggestion would be, after we take a five-minute break, you think about it, maybe, and, and think really what your product offering is gonna be. If your product offering is gonna be splits of champagne, or half bottles of wine, or full bottle, 750 milliliter bottles of wine, and forget the spirits, and maybe forget the beer other than in, you know, the occasional bottle, maybe that's a better marketing philosophy than this full, broad, unrestricted beverage that you're talking, that your application is talking about. Like maybe if, you know, if, if I'm gonna buy a, a gift package for a client or a friend, maybe one of these people.
Me first.
I would think about the product that they would want. And maybe it is. Gee, we're celebrating a wedding. Maybe it's a, you know, a couple of beautiful crystal goblets and a split of champagne and all, you know, the flowers and the whole deal, right? For somebody's wedding. What in the world do I need a, a liquor license to sell spirits for? I mean, really, when you get right down to it. And how in the world are you gonna stock all that?
That's, that's my exact question. So if you're, if you're including spirits, let's say I go to buy a, a basket for Commissioner Mercy, and, you know, I say, I'd like to get these flowers, and he really likes Bailey's Irish Cream, but you don't have it in stock. I mean, you would have to have a lot of, I would think, backstock for a particular, and it's kind of hit and miss as to what, because if you can't run down to Costco and just, or, either Costco or Bevmo and just purchase it to put it in the basket.
Correct. There'll be, so there'll be only a cup, there'll only be a few choices from that.
So they'll have a menu.
So why, so why don't, why don't, why don't we take a five-minute break and you think about what those choices are, and maybe, maybe we have a way to deal with this, or maybe we continue to talk about it and suggest to you that you may want to think this through a little more? Because what I'm hearing from my colleagues is a very broad type 21, everything that any, anybody, like a Bevmo or anyone like that can sell is what your license says you can stock and market. Even if it's in a gift box, gift pack, whatever. Maybe ought to think about narrowing your scope a little bit, and that'll be an easier sell for you and us both.
Chairman Vos, I just wanted to point out, her initial request was just for wine. Correct?
What changed?
The market.
The market asked for it?
The market asked for it, yes, sir. And it's not that we're gonna be carrying every type of whiskey or every type of vodka or every type of-
We hear you, but the license allows you to do that. And that's our heartburn. I, I, I hope you can hear what people are saying here.
I am, I'm grasping it all.
Because, you know, we want your business to be successful. We want you to, you know, I mean, it's a neat idea, I think. It really is. How, how do we protect our community is really what it's about.
Correct.
And can I just go back on what you said when you first came up, just to clarify? Currently, it's Isla's Florist? Is that the name of the business?
Isla's Floral Boutique and Event Planning. That's at 1008. And then this one is Isla's Boutique.
So the one on 10th currently is Isla's Boutique, not Florist?
No, it's Isla's Floral Boutique and Event Planning.
On 10th?
On 10th, yes, ma'am. No, on, at 10, there's two locations on the-
Right, so the one on 10th has got a sign. I think there's a sign out on 10th, and it says Isla's Florist, right? Is that what the sign says?
The one on 10th has, no. It should have just been Isla's Boutique.
Okay.
That was a miss. Yeah, it should have just said Isla's Boutique.
Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I didn't, I just kind of glanced at it, but-
Yeah. The one that, this one being proposed will just say Isla's Boutique. And then the one on, that's operating now is Isla's Floral Boutique and Event Planning. We just separated the names.
Okay, so just again to clarify, the one on 10th is not a Florist?
It will have flowers in there.
Okay.
But it will not be doing the, what the other one is. The other one is attached to my mortuary. So that's the concept was to be able to do flowers for the, for the mortuary. So the, the Isla's Floral Boutique and Event Planning, that's, is attached to the mortuary. So we, we got the other building for just the boutique, and that will only do everything boutique.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything further?
Chairman Vos, if we-
Go ahead.
Have her reevaluate the scope of her request, are we going to be rewriting conditions up here on the dais, or should we continue?
I don't, I don't expect we will. I just, I just want to flush out the whole process here and make sure the applicant gets a, you know, gets a clear opportunity to tell us what she's proposing to do. And we have another speaker. I'm, I, your partner, husband, friend, all that?
Yeah, well, not the hu-
Not the husband, no.
Okay, well, um, so we, so we all get, clearly understand what this is all about. I mean, we want business to be successful in the community. I mean, we just do. But clearly, the type 21 is, is a heartburn for, can't speak for everybody, but a lot of us. So, anything more you want to offer before?
No, I'll let him call up.
Okay. Hang on, and you can come back. Have a seat. You can come back. This gentleman is?
Mark House.
Mr. House?
House, yes, I'm the son of her business partner. I'm kind of somewhat involved with the business.
You're, you're here on behalf of the boss?
Mildred House, yes. The boss. She sent me.
Welcome, Mr. House.
Just wanted to kind of look at some of the questions that you had asked Ms. Lopez, specifically the liquor. Type 21 is unique. It is the granddaddy of all liquor licenses. However, in the state of California under ABC, you have several ones, but either it's beer and wine, type 20, or type 21 if you want to step outside beer and wine. There is nothing else in between that a person can ask for. One of the things that I want to look at is that I can understand your situation is how do we control it? How do we look at and say, are you gonna do what you say you're gonna do? Or if the business is sold, what can it, ABC is, ABC is very unique. If the business is sold, the license must be reevaluated. So if I today, somebody offered me $200,000 for the business, ABC would have to come in and look at and say, now, what is this going to be here at this particular location? ABC can deny the license to be sold to another person. In fact, also, if I did say sell the license 21, and they wanted to stay in Palm, Lancaster, Palmdale, Lancaster area, they would still have to go in front of the planning board, which could deny them the CUP. So there are some safeguards to prevent us just say, from selling to somebody who wants to open up a liquor store. You could deny the CUP there. ABC would also deny because ABC says this license was specifically for a floral shop selling gift baskets. So it's just not something that we can arbitrarily go and sell it, and then it opens up as a liquor store. There are safeguards. You guys are one of the safeguards. ABC is a safeguard for that. One other thing I know that was mentioned is the delivery aspect. We would have, we would fall under the same guidelines because a lot of our boxes will be shipped out. We're basically creating a, an internet business here. There's not many of them here in this area. And 90% of our boxes will probably be shipped out. We will be utilizing UPS and FedEx, and we have to go by their guidelines as far as shipping alcohol for safety purposes. So we're just not doing this ad hoc. And hopefully that you will see that, that there is safety parameters there, just not having an open 21. We will not have a large selection of alcohol. Every month we may change our, maybe this month we'll have Bailey's. We stop Bailey's, we start something else. We do not plan to have a large selection in stock of alcohol, that is not what we're there for. That could also be put in as a contingency of how much we can, and the offer that we can offer, but that's not what our business is for. But we just want to have the ability to grow, and to offer our customers a large selection if they choose based upon what our selection is.
All right, thank you. Maybe questions?
Yes, so, Mr. House?
Yes, ma'am.
In the role that we're in, I feel as though, as commissioners for this great city, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our citizens, which I look at as shareholders in this community.
Yes, ma'am.
To make sure that we're compliant.
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand that if ABC has to reapprove, relook at, but I'm going to pose the question to city staff, does any of that have to come back before this commission if the business is sold, or what have you, changes hands, or does it change hands and kind? I just want to make sure before we make any decisions, as I said, I feel as though in this role, I am trusted to make sure that we comply with not only federal, state, and local processes, or rules and regulations, and alcohol for this commission is a huge one.
Understandably.
We're legally responsible in a lot of cases on some of the things that we are, decisions that we're making up here. So that's why this is a huge one for us. We believe in smart growth for this community, and Ms. Lopez, I wish you well in this venture. However, we have to make strong, informed decisions, that's the place that we're coming from, if I could speak for the rest of this commission.
Understand.
So with that, what, what do we have to stand on as a commission?
Sure, I just want to highlight condition number two. So if it is a different type of business, other than a floral business, they would not be able to operate. It talks about, number two says, "The sale of alcohol shall be clearly incidental to the operation of a business as a floral and gift shop." So if another person came in with a license, and it wasn't a floral shop, we would not be able to approve that.
But did she just, maybe I'm confused, because she said it's a boutique that also offers flowers, it's not a floral...
It's a floral gift boutique shop.
But to be clear, that what you're saying is, that all the conditions that we would approve would stay in place if anything changed, or if, or if a new business, or even this business wanted to change, it would have to come back to us?
If they wanted to modify these conditions, it would come back.
Even, even under a new owner?
If, yes, if they're modifying those conditions.
So that person couldn't buy it, and then...
Start operating, yeah.
However, a new owner within ninety days doesn't have to come back to us.
They would have to come back for us, for, to sign off a business license application.
Business license, yes, but not this conditional use permit?
Not if they're operating on...
Right.
May, may I say that even if I so did, ABC would, would have to look at it.
We hear you about ABC, we don't trust them as far as we can throw them, we've had, we've had issues with ABC relative to operations that we ended up having to close down, because ABC wouldn't, where people were injured, crimes were committed, very nasty situations. So ABC is about ninety-second on our list of nice people we like to interact with.
Understandably.
So...
If I can just chime in, I'm sorry to interrupt, Commissioner Harvey, you were asking about if there's a new owner, and they want to kind of operate it differently. Regardless of the eighty-ninth day, or the ninetieth day, or whatever, the conditions of the CUP are still the conditions of the CUP, and if the city learns that that is being operated in nonconformance with the requirements of the CUP, you'll recall last year, we beefed up chapter seventeen point forty-three, and that's grounds for revocation right there.
However, we still have to notice that, we still have to hold public hearings, we still have to make a finding, you know, six months, a year later, right?
The only thing I would say to that, yes, that is correct, but we wouldn't just revoke the CUP, we would also revoke the business license, and that doesn't have that kind of timeline, that's, you're done in about thirty days, even with an appeal hearing.
Right. All right, thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you.
So Ms. Corbett, I'm not sure how to pose the question. I guess it's the concern about the type 21 license at a location, even with conditions, the right of the owner of that type, of that condition type 21. Any case law out there relative to folks litigating and proving up the, and eliminating the conditions of licensed premises, such as we're talking about here, that are conditioned, that get overturned by the court, and then turns into a full-blown 21 operation? I wonder?
There is some case law out there, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't immediately think of one directly on point, under these circumstances, there may well be one out there. I'll be happy to go back and do some Westlaw research and let you know, but as, as we know, anything can be litigated.
No, no, I understand that, yeah.
Anything can be overturned.
You know, I don't want to put these folks in a position to where it becomes litigious, it becomes a code enforcement issue, it becomes a nightmare, we don't want to do that. So, I just want to be careful, and I'm, I'm really not sure what the real questions are, other than the hair, what little hair I have left on the back of my head stands up when I hear type 21, even with conditions. I mean, we've conditioned other alcohol beverage sales operations infinitum, and they turn bad on us. So, you know, it's a level of comfort, so, maybe, maybe the best solution is tonight to continue this for a month, and ask, ask you to take a look at some of the case law relative to type 21, and see if, you know, see if we can develop a level of comfort. Maybe we want to talk about limiting the, the beverage that can be marketed. Exclude spirits entirely, or not, and just focus on wine, beer and wine, maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
Yeah, well, going back to my earlier question, I'd like to see kind of like, just how flexible we can be, or creative, I guess, we can be with the conditions. You know, the stated purpose, I think, makes sense, it sounds like a sound business plan. Want to do what we can to help them be successful with that, and create our comfort for us and our citizens, but, and kind of different creative ideas on conditions we can do to, to make sure it stays within the lines.
Yeah, if the wine, I mean, if the winery can operate with, you know, and their operation with the gift baskets and stuff, I mean, we've all probably, at one time or another, either bought it or received them, stuff, I mean, it's, it's a cool gift, I mean, it really is, so, I mean, I can see that this could be very successful. It's the 21 that gives me the, the heart, you know, and maybe I'm just not seeing it clearly, you know, maybe I've got blinders on, I don't know. So, anyway. All right, staff, you have any more to add?
Nothing more, Chair.
Okay. And we cut the applicant off, kind of, so, Mr. House and Ms. Lopez, you certainly can come back and talk to us some more, we're more than happy to listen to you. No, yes? You know? We'll make sure you get your opportunity to talk to us.
As I am hearing what your, your concerns are, having a business here that does it, I think helps the community, but that doesn't mean someone else is not going to do it. I can be down in Los Angeles and be shipping the boxes up here, what would change? I can move down to Santa Clarita and start opening up the business there, and ship them up here.
Because the responsibility is on us right now, that's what the difference is.
But the responsibility, that the concern, the big concern is, a misuse or, or, I would like maybe you to rephrase, or to ask me, or to kind of clear up, your responsibility of alcohol getting to the community, or is it a business selling alcohol? Because if we're talking about alcohol getting to the community, it's already there, and someone else can start shipping boxes here. So that is, I mean...
Crime is here also, but this body, speaking for myself, we have to look at each individual applicant, what you're asking for, I can't control all those other things, but I can control my mind, my heart, and my vote.
Absolutely.
And so that is the difference.
Absolutely. When you're talking about crime, at our facility, we don't plan to have a lot of, I think, if one thing is walking customers. Like I said, we're going to be primarily, we're developing an internet business, and that is the wave of the future, if I want to say, those are the businesses that are out there.
I just, I keep seeing things, it feels like it changes, because when you talked about the one condition that you have to, is your florist that is adding this, is, you know, an added benefit, but now you're talking about shipping gift boxes, that I imagine aren't going to have flowers in the gift boxes that you're selling over the internet.
Our concept is this, in most celebratory things, people come in and buy flowers.
Right.
What we're saying is, there's a better way, just flowers, we have another option. Every box that we sell is sold also with flowers.
So if you're shipping, if I'm having you ship something to my friend in Sacramento is going to have, the box is going to have flowers in it? I'm not clear.
Boxes, well, yes, we also have a box that is, contains the flowers too. So your friend will receive two boxes, a bouquet in one box, and the box with whatever choice of box they chose, because we have roughly five different types of boxes that we have now, different types of boxes. We have a baby box, we have a morning box, a morning box is with fruit, and you have a choice to have a cappuccino in there, or if you want a sparkling cider in there, or if you wanted a bottle of wine in there, you can put that in there. So we have multiple different types of boxes that we are, set boxes that we're selling. Each box comes with a floral arrangement, that's our concept. So we are a florist that sells also gift boxes that comes with flowers.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. House.
Would I be speaking out of turn?
Go ahead.
If I made a suggestion to continue this? Yes, no?
Pardon?
Would I be speaking out of turn if I made a suggestion to continue to next month?
Well, you know, motion's in order anytime, we have, the public hearing's still open, if you don't want to close the public hearing, you want to continue this to the next meeting, or whenever, and ask staff for whatever you want them to do, that would be appropriate.
I would like to see staff give us a little more background on internet selling of alcohol. I've been flipping through the search engines here, and it's kind of hard to find, actually. I don't think Amazon sells it.
I just want to point out, any of the off-sale license, people that carry an off-sale license can have deliveries now, it's legal, all of them can do it right now, currently. I'm not sure how many people are actually doing it, but they could have a delivery service, go to a convenience market, pick up an alcohol and deliver it, currently.
So, what's your pleasure, guys?
I move to continue Resolution Number 17-29.
To what, next meeting?
To next meeting, please.
Second.
Okay, and the direction of the staff would be additional background information on internet sales of alcoholic beverages, or this type of a business, whole concept, potentially limiting the purveyor of the beverage to a more narrow perspective, possibly. The ca, the case law issues that we discussed briefly, if, is that enough time, between now and next meeting? Okay, anything else, folks?
I think some of what we discussed, the ideas of, if it's tied to a value of the package, I mean, although that can change, I mean, if it's a bottle of Dom Perignon, that might be the most expensive thing in the package.
Hundred and forty-five dollars a bottle.
Yeah, but things like that to make sure that, you know, whatever kind of creative things we can think of, to make sure that it's not only alcohol that's going into it, because I, you know, I've read about, Amazon is starting to do this in the cities, they offer grocery delivery, and within it, you know, they'll get you groceries, including alcohol, I think, in an, in an hour or two, if you're in like LA and other big cities. So I love the idea of local folks beating them to the punch, in that sense, and then creating a good business model. Again, I think mentioned as part of it is, it's incidental sales. Is there a legal description on that, as to, in terms of where would the line be that would be then more than incidental, and how do we enforce that? Because I, I think as long as we can create that level of certainty for us, and for the city to have the ability to enforce it, I think this direction I'd like to see us go.
Understood, and staff will do some more research on that.
Okay. Anything further from anyone? All right, so, public hearing's still open, the motion is to continue the matter till the next regular meeting, here in this chamber is, so if you're ready to vote, please vote.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay. Hopefully it's clear to all of us, including, certainly the applicant and staff, so, sooner we get all over this, the better, and so we can make a final decision. Great, thank you very much. All right, item number eleven is Covenant of Easement Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, my name is Alan Thompson.
Alan, thanks for coming down here and listening to all of us today.
You're welcome, very interesting. I work for Development Services Department, and we're here today to ask you for an ordinance. This ordinance would give us a tool that we can use in planning and in development, and without getting into too much detail, it's basically what's called a covenant of easement, and as you can imagine, in development, we often have to condition a developer to allow access, or provide access, or maybe parking, to another parcel that's near them. We're very sensitive that somebody's not cut off and become landlocked from some development. So typically, we would do that, we would condition them to provide some kind of easement, and that normally works, however, if the owner of that development happens to own also the property next door that, that we want to provide access to, they can't do an easement, because there's a caveat in the law that you can't give an easement to yourself. So the government code allows cities to work around here, they allow this covenant of easement, which basically the developer would, would record this document, this covenant of easement, and the city would be a part of that, and then if that lot is ever sold to somebody else, that covenant of easement would then turn into an easement. So it's something that would come up very rarely, but most major cities do have this, this ordinance, and so the government code allows us to do that, but we have to have an ordinance defining exactly how it works, so that's what we're here to propose.
So it's an ordinance to create a promise?
Yes.
Perfect.
On sixteen twenty-four three ninety, release of covenant, it says, "Easement shall be made by the approving authority," who is that?
That would, it would have to go to city council.
So we wouldn't see it again, it would...
Not necessarily, unless it was part of a bigger package of some development, a condition.
What would be the mechanism for it to go to them? Would they have to pay fees to go, like to appeal the process on a CUP, or do they just put it on their agenda, and how would that work?
Typically, it'd be one of the conditions, if it's a major, major project, so it'd go with the same way the conditions would go. Something smaller could be just a, we could put it... Something smaller could be just a, we could put it on the agenda as a proposal, it would, the fee would be the same as what we do for all of our other small miscellaneous type recording documents at the city.
So it'd be a supplement to the standard conditions on an application in effect, right?
Yes.
Make your life easier.
Yeah, like I said, we wouldn't use it much, but when we need it.
That's the best answer.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome.
All right. So, a motion would be in order, unless there's other, do we have speakers on this? No? Nope?
In that case, I move to adopt Resolution Number 17-31, recommending to the City Council approval of an ordinance, amending Title 16 of the LMC by adding Chapter 16.24, Article 11, relating to the creation of easements by covenant.
Second.
Thank you. All right, if you're ready to vote, please vote.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. All right, new business. Subdivision completion incentive. Well, you're back again.
I'm back, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Now we'd like to discuss the proposal for a program that is designed to help some people with their, maybe their living conditions in Lancaster. Thank you.
You were kind enough to share this information at our study session, and, you know, unless we've all got a whole lot of questions, you don't need to do the whole thing again.
Okay.
I do have some questions, but go ahead. Go ahead, I mean, if you want to describe it briefly, if that's necessary or not. Anybody want to hear the report again?
Nothing new, I just have some nice pictures this time.
Sorry. Says here I have to take medication, sorry, my phone went off.
We can wait.
There's nobody important other than the doctor.
Your mic's on.
Is that your phone?
No, your mic, it's on.
Oh, okay. It is on, yeah. Anyway, questions? I looked at all these sites. Some of them go back to 1988.
Yeah, one of them's very old.
Eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, two thousand six, two thousand seven, two thousand For the most part, they've got the infrastructures in, water school, sewer, storm, maybe, certainly the first lift to asphalt, meter, meter boxes are in, I didn't pull meters, I didn't pull meter boxes to see if Water Works District meters were installed. But one might suppose, whether fees are paid, who in heck knows? It's all over the board, right?
Right, exactly.
Right. So, if these have been sitting there since 1988, 1989, 1990, 2006, 2007, some of which, you know, are, most of them are actually in very nice neighborhoods.
Some of the west sides aren't bad at all, right?
Yeah, a couple of them are a little shaky, but, I mean, if you're looking at it from a marketing viability point of view, because that's really what you're talking about doing is incentivizing to get them to move so they can get developed, so houses will be built and people will live there.
Exactly, yeah.
And you have a viable neighborhood instead of a partially viable neighborhood.
Exactly.
Right? I mean, that's the motive, right?
Right.
Okay. And you're talking about a four to $6,000 incentive per lot, is really what you're talking about.
Yeah, it'd be five, $5,000, half of the impact fees, which is $5,600 or so.
Okay, so $5,600, whatever the number is.
Yeah.
What's the cost to produce a lot today? Sixty-eight to $80,000, right? To produce a lot, that's not including land costs, that's just creating a lot. From dirt up to be able to build a house on it, right? That fair number?
Yes.
So how in the hell is $5,600 going to stimulate six or seven lots left over in the middle of a subdivision? I mean, what builders are out there? What, I mean, certainly not merchant builders, certainly not public companies are going to go tackle a seven-lot subdivision fifteen miles or six miles from their current project in reality? I mean, am I off base here?
No, we certainly don't know in every case. At least one of those cases in those seven-lot subdivision, we had one investor come talk to us several times. He was really, really close to making it pencil, but he just couldn't quite get it there, and so he backed off. But with this small incentive, as small as it is, it could have put him over the edge. Some of the other ones, I couldn't promise that would do much.
But if I've got 102 lots, that's got an overlay of a community facilities district on it, that $5,600 bucks isn't going to stimulate anybody. I mean, unless your crystal ball's a lot clearer than mine.
Nope. We just see that there is definitely a problem, and have picked these older tracks that have been, not abandoned, but have been in that situation for a long time and no real foreseeable help, and to do something that might put them...
Well, let's look at the first one, 39910. That was mapped in 1988, I mean, it was recorded in 88, it wasn't built until 90 through 92, 93, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Those lots in there have been on and off the market. I know from personal experience, at least a half a dozen on it. I don't, you know, I don't know who owns any of these. I didn't go that far into the research, because there's no buyers for it today, so I don't waste my time looking at these kinds of opportunities. But let's just say there were, let's just say there's a real merchant builder out there that would step up and jump in today. That's 27 years, almost 30 years, that that stuff's been sitting there like that. Really believe, deep down in your heart, that $5,600 bucks is going to make a difference?
Not for most of these tracks.
And why are we doing it?
Well, we're asked to look at something, see if we can do something to try to help these people out. And I do know, like I said before, that in some cases, the developers are really close to thinking about it, but...
When you say help people out, you're not helping the developer out, you're helping out the neighborhood, is really what you're talking about.
That's our only incentive, yes. I don't personally believe it could help everyone, but I don't know every case, I don't know the story behind every tract. We just want to do something, this is some idea that we came up with, we're coming here to ask for your input, and trying to see, maybe there's some better ideas out there, but...
What happened with the inquiry relative to the bonding?
And that's definitely still an option, when we have looked seriously at that. That would help at least finish the public improvements in the streets, wouldn't do much for the vacant lots, which is, which is a big portion of the problem that we have here. It also would be very detrimental to the developer themselves. Some of these developers have come, most of them have come on board after, they didn't necessarily create the problem or have much to do with it. And so it could really hurt their credit in getting bonds in the future, but certainly something to look into.
So you're saying that the successor in fee is encumbered with the current bonds that were placed on that, on those public improvements, and that if you called those bonds, that it would impact the current owner in fee?
Yeah, because they're required to substitute the bonds when they take it over. So whatever the condition was, they have to get the new bond in their name, so if we...
So the T, so the city has the teeth to complete the public improvement?
Yes.
So when people say it costs lots of money to go back to repair failed subdivisions, the money opportunity is there for the city to exercise the right to get the public improvements completed? The mechanism is in place?
Yes. And many of these tracks have, have streets accepted, and are getting their streets swept, still doesn't take care of the vacant lots and the dumping and the...
Yeah, but most of this, I mean, most of the stuff you look at out there, I mean, it's the second lift. I mean, it's not a big deal, finishing the streetlights, right?
Right.
I mean, it's, and we're not talking about a fortune here. I mean, at least it would go off the city's books, and the only thing you have to deal with is going out there with a 30-yard dumpster every other day and picking up the trash. And you condition the landowner to fence it to keep the vandals out, and then somebody comes along and steals the fence, right?
Yeah, you notice that.
Of course. I mean, it happened directly across the street from my home, same thing. One day it's there, next day it's gone, you know, whatever. Why can't you do it on a case-by-case basis?
We wanted to, we thought at first, we didn't want to look like we're trying to help any particular developer, we wanted to...
That's what you're doing, I mean, there's more, there's more lots out there like this than just these.
Right, the other, there's 24 tracks in Lancaster that are, that have not been finished. Of those 16 have homes on them, those are really the ones that we're looking at, because that's the residents that we're worried about. And of those, half of those are in some form, they've either been built, being constructed now, or in the recent past, they pulled permits. So they're doing something, there's some activity there, so we're not too worried that they're, that they're not going to be finished in the near future. It's these eight that nothing's happened for 10 years.
So if I'm the guy just piddling around, building one or two at a time, or one at a time based on a sale, and my neighbor down the road gets the $5,600 incentive, so I stop and come back and say, hey, how about me? You know, how come he's getting it and I'm not?
Well, the way we have it...
Where's the equity there?
Yeah, and it's not an easy solution, that would definitely come up. They couldn't get it under the way we would propose this, because it would have to have been idle for that long. But I would expect developers to come in and say, why, you know, I've been trying, why not me? But we got to start somewhere, we wanted to start small, and in the worst, the biggest Yeah, I don't really see a win-win here, it's hopefully something that we can maybe help out a little bit and hopefully see some kind of improvement.
Any idea what the cost is? I mean, are you aware, well, historically, are you aware that the city went in and made any repairs to homes that had either deteriorated or had any incentive or any cost related to the last downfall, downtime in construction, 2008 on forward? Brian, are you?
I don't recall that we did anything specifically with that, although obviously the city's had programs to try to upgrade and do things.
Right, but I mean, the city, the city did not hire a general contractor and go in and finish houses and turn them over.
No.
Or make repairs of substandard housing.
No.
Right?
No.
The only thing the city has done is cleaned up unfinished subdivisions, just like we clean up the vacant desert when idiots dump trash all over them, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's just a different location. Instead of vacant desert land, it's a partially finished subdivision, with the trees growing and go out there and cut them down, and clear off the brush, and the old couches, and the, on and on and on, right? That's, I mean, that's what the guys down Avenue H get to do every day. There's one guy in a, what is that, a 28-foot bobtail with a 30-yard box on the back with a...
Right.
And that's all he does, Monday through Friday, all over the valley, all over Lancaster, right?
Right.
That's basically what goes on here, every day, every weekday. And in these locations, they're, you know, I mean, there's a, there's a whole pile of new mattresses on the one at, where is it? Oh, 54199-01. I wasn't clear on which, on which subdivision, which part of the 60-lot subdivision, 61489, because when you look it up, there's, under 61489, there's two sets of maps recorded under the same number. There's a 79-lot map, and there's a 73-lot map.
Yeah, so only the one that has houses on it, it's...
Okay.
I can show you the pictures, but some of these are surrounded by recorded tracks, but there's no houses, so we're not too worried about them now.
Right, right, but there's, but under that, under that map number, there's...
Yeah, we'll have a -01 or...
There's actually two maps, there's a, there's an 01 and a...
Right.
Whatever.
Yeah.
So when you, I mean, when you pull up the database, that's... So, the one out at, the one out at 90th West Nye, and that has, that has a CFD on it, right?
Yeah, it's a private streets gated community, so definitely wouldn't be a track that we would target for a program like this, but they fit in those same conditions of the other ones, so we didn't necessarily exclude them.
Okay. Okay.
Wouldn't their streets be private?
Yeah.
In that particular community?
That track, there's private streets.
So I would think it would not be at the top of the list, perhaps?
It's not, it's just that because it's a recorded track map that has houses on it, and it's set idle for the last 10 years, it fits in the criteria. So any one of, any track that fit in the criteria, we put it in, it was, there's eight tracks that fit that criteria.
So we clean around that area as well? The guy with the bobcat?
Well, not inside the tract.
But near, around?
But it could be around, yes. I don't know of anything bad there, it's kind of on the outside, so you don't get so much graffiti, you might get some dumping, but, but it hasn't been a big issue there, no.
Did, as part of the $70,000 to $80,000 per lot, $5,600 being the incentive we're offering, have you looked at asking any of the other agencies that are part of that to kick in and try to help and maybe make that a little more sweeter?
No, we haven't. That's a good idea.
What other agencies are you thinking about?
Schools and...
Schools, high school district, elementary school. I mean, they would be...
What would be their benefit? What would, what...
They would get ADA.
Well, assuming that houses are built and...
Kids lived in them.
Kids lived in them, yeah. You know, so, you know, it's less than eight tenths of a kid per house, so I mean, you know, you're talking about these 303 lots, and that's 240 kids over four school districts.
But if you're asking for a dollar, and somebody says, I can get you 50 cents, it's 50 cents, then it's better than nothing.
That's my point is, you know, if the landowner... That's my point is, you know, if, if the landowner, I won't call them developers. We had a whole bunch of landowners in here earlier, right?
Yeah.
I didn't, you know, there might have been one developer in the bunch. So if, if I want to make my case, I own this property and I need an incentive to finish the lots, I will make my case. To make it a blanket deal when you have different underlying conditions in each subdivision, I mean, it doesn't make economic sense to, to me. Now, I'm not writing a check for the city, but if I were, I'd want to look at the economics on each one individually, as opposed to a blanket, in some cases might be a gift, in other cases, it's not enough. Or fifty-six is a good number. I mean, I don't know. I, I just, but I don't know how you, I don't know how you craft that into a, into an incentive program. Since we don't have redevelopment agency anymore...
Yeah.
There's, there's really no easy way, right? Is that really what you're saying?
Yeah, it's not an easy answer. We've, we've gone through a lot of different scenarios. This is just one of them and not sure what the effect that would have either, as you can tell.
Well, we've done a lot of, you know, let's not, let's not put, uh, let's incentivize not putting backyards in. And go look at those subdivisions. Get in your little helicopter and go look at those subdivisions. And what do you have? Ninety-five percent of them with no backyards even today.
Yeah.
So that was a great decision. Got the houses built and people moved into them, um, and no backyards. And now we have subdivisions come to us and, never mind, I won't go any further. I, I don't see the benefit personally of spending the million and a half dollars or foregoing the revenue of a million and a half dollars to do a blanket incentivization. My, my point of view on a per parcel, per lot, per subdivision proposal would be more appropriate if I was writing the check. I don't know how you do that. That's just me.
Is that one-point-five million perhaps a dime chasing the potential dollar? If you make that investment in cleaning the area, would that draw more developers, not necessarily landowners, people buying homes?
Dude, look at it this way. If, if all the infrastructure was in and paid for, bonds are gone, you don't worry about any of that. You don't have to, you don't have to extend the bond. You don't have to go to the bonding company and it's done. City's off the hook. It's a complete subdivision. Now, here's the problem. The problem is the trash that impacts the livability of the people who currently live surrounding it. That, that's the problem. And how do you solve that? Finishing the subdivision might be the first step, and then looking at incentivization. Seems to me, I mean, historically, you look, well, you look at the, you look at the merchant builders that have built here, who went out and acquired remaining subdivisions, right? We know who they are and they're not here anymore. And the reason why is because they couldn't make a land deal, couldn't get it at a price that penciled, even with fifty-six hundred bucks. They've gone through them all with a fine-tooth comb. So that makes me concerned. If, if they're to be believed, that they've, you know, gone through each and every one of them. So, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I just know I don't like giving away a million and a half dollars that keeps the divisions running, including yours, right?
Yes. Definitely not a sustainable program. Um, it might work in some cases, but...
Well, it may, you know, given our history of incentivization, has it been successful?
Right.
Somebody's gonna have to answer that. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, I've certainly written down your suggestions. We can go back, look at, look at them more, talk with Mr. Cottle and see where we go from there.
All right, very good.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are we done yet? Oh. Community benefit agreement, program ordinance. Um, as I mentioned last time we were together, um, the city council has tasked the commission with, they gave us direction to impose similar conditions on all pending applications and to take up an ordinance to impose a similar obligation citywide. Subsequent to that motion approval, that last city council meeting, it was further clarified that, um, the proposed community benefit agreement would not include a requirement that developers pay prevailing wage. That was clarified by a member of the city council, and nobody disagreed with that. Would that be how you heard it, Mr. Ludiki?
That's how I heard it, Mr. Chairman.
So, I need two volunteers besides myself. One, one would be a participant and another would be an alternate to participate with the development industry, the city staff, um, representatives of labor and developers to sit at the table and help formulate the outline of an ordinance that we might consider in the future to, to create a community benefit program. Any volunteers?
My first question is that, is there any way that we'd be in violation of the Brown Act as there are no longer seven commissioners? There's only, there's six, meaning three would be...
Well, that's why, that's why we would have two of us plus an alternate.
Okay.
That way, the third person could, no, no more than two of us would attend, but there would be three of us available. So if somebody's out of town or can't show up or whatever, so, so if two of you want to participate, raise your hand. If you don't, that's okay too. You?
Yes.
You will? Okay. Anybody else? Any other volunteers? Probably be daytime meetings, I'm assuming. I'm assuming, yeah. And the city manager's office, I believe is coordinating that, right? Or are you, Mr. Ludiki? Don't know.
I believe the city manager's office is, um, dealing with this, and in fact, I have a meeting scheduled with them on, I believe, Thursday to have this discussion and understand. I believe that they are helping formulate who should be a part of that group.
Okay. All right. So you'll let the city manager's office know that we've got a couple of folks on the commission that will participate, depending on schedule, of course.
Yes, and, and just so the, the commission's also aware, I believe Chairman Vos, I've, I've mentioned this to you. I have had direct conversations with DeAndre Valencia, who's the representative of the Building Industry Association. They obviously want a seat at this table. I believe that will be the case, but just so you know that we've, we've had that ongoing discussion.
Mr. White, the, the developer of Avanti North, also indicated he would certainly be available to participate, I think. Isn't that his name, White?
Yes, Mike White.
Right, okay. And whomever else, I don't know, I have no idea. Well, uh, labor, the, organized labor folks. Whomever that may be. Okay. All right, thank you. That was done. Signs, did you cue those up or, or did we get an answer from Ms. Corbett? I know, I know she's not feeling well and had to leave, so...
Yeah, she, she did, she and I spoke, um, last week. She did write some notes for me too, to, to reiterate our discussion. Basically, in terms of, um, the sign, the sign issue...
Stuff in the public right-ofway.
Clearly, anything in the public right-ofway, we have the ability to go remove, you know, particularly if it's blocking sidewalk or, or posing some kind of a, of a danger. It gets a lot more difficult if that sign is on private property because the only way the city can then begin to deal with it is try to determine if that private property owner has given some kind of permission for that sign to be there. Um, as, as you are, some of these, I think, are sort of semi-permanent signs, but a lot of them are things that just show up for, for a few hours, and by the time you figure that out, it's probably gone. Um, I, I don't know how much we really discussed with the commission as a whole, but I know Chairman Vos that you, Jocelyn Corbett and I talked quite a bit about what the Supreme Court case on Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona. That has thrown into question lots of things in regards to city sign, uh, codes. Um, in talking with Jocelyn a little bit more about that last week, uh, she would be very hesitant as a, as a, from a legal perspective to move forward at this point with any modification to, to codes because we're kind of waiting for the fallout from all of that still. And, you know, as you may recall, we did a pretty extensive work, uh, work effort with the commission, I think, gosh, two years ago now?
Yep.
In terms of trying to...
Yeah, we did a lot of work and it came to a complete stop.
It came to a complete halt because of, of that decision. And I don't know if you've read that decision, but I've read it a couple of times and it's highly confusing.
Yes, it's beyond confusing.
Right. So, but yes, it's clear that if something's in the public right-ofway, you know, the city has the right to do that. If as a commission, you would like us to relay to our, to the code enforcement people that there's been a concern expressed about them, be more than happy to...
It's interesting. I noticed one driving in today. It was, it was placed in the flood control ditch west of Fortieth on J, what would be about Forty-first on the north side of the street.
I saw that one on my way home too.
Yeah. Um, you know, I mean, clearly, well, it's, I mean, it's in the flood control channel. That's certainly in the, is not on private property. It's in the public right-ofway. And depending on the right-ofway, I mean, you know, Avenue J is what, fifty feet on East Side. Clearly, there's stuff in the, in the swale that's graded by the city or the county on behalf of the city. Um, so, I mean, it's just cluttering up the landscape, whatever they are. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they ought to be out of there, but it's up to you guys. If you want to impose it, that's up to y'all.
We'll have that discussion with the code enforcement.
I, I know one of the things that Ms. Corbett also wanted to have us be mindful of is that we were not targeting certain industry.
No.
So no, that was a concern.
Just anything that's out there, yeah. But the stuff on private property, I mean, clearly that's out of the arena, unless you happen to be in a commercial shopping center and the property manager dumps you for putting up a sign. And it happens, right? Okay, well, now, where else are we at here? Okay, director's announcements.
Couple of quick things, Mr. Chairman. You'll recall that for several meetings, you reviewed the master plan of complete streets. That is scheduled to be considered by the city council at their October tenth meeting. So we'll, uh, see if that moves forward with their, with their blessing. Uh, and some of you may have been aware that there was an appeal filed on one of the cannabis cases, CUP seventeen dash sixteen, which was out in the Foxfield area. That was scheduled for last Tuesday's council meeting. That was withdrawn. That appeal was withdrawn by the appellant prior to the, to the hearing. So it would appear at this point that all of your decisions stand at this point on the cannabis cultivation case requests.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Anything else? Commission agenda? Anybody? Anything? Nope, okay. Public business on the floor. We have an opportunity that anyone who wishes to address us tonight on any non-agendized item is certainly welcome to have a conversation. Do we have any speakers, Mr. Ludiki?
I have no speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no one? Nope. All right, very good. Um, so... We stand adjourned till Monday, October ninth, two thousand seventeen, at four-thirty PM here in this chamber. Thank you all for your hard work tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Good meeting.
Thank you.